Isn't it a file?
Oh, we're costing for Halloween.
Isn't it a file?
That is the file.
No, no, no.
The only thing good about this, that's not even good.
Digital file.
It's not killing me.
Well, no, we get it from counties FTP site and then we have to print it.
Yeah, they said they said you can, if I can get it as a file. I can't.
I'll have to source what they give us.
Let me see if this is one.
An email. I can't share it from the FTP site, which is no way to do it.
But you can download it.
If I can download it safely.
Yes, you can.
I'm going to call to order the special meeting to set the agenda for Morrisville Borough for Monday, March 16th. Please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call Virginia, please.
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Drayson?
Here.
Councilman Malala?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
And Councilman Yeager?
Here.
Move on to four, which is announcements and presentations, and four A is the Morrisville Little League.
You might just make sure the green button is on right on top there. You can remove it from that. You won't break it if you want to. And just press the button on the side. Make sure the green is on.
Much better. Very good. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the council, mayor. I appreciate you guys taking the time tonight to speak with me. For those of you I have not met yet, my name is Jim O'Brien. I'm the newly elected president of Morrisville Little League. I replaced James Schaefer, who had been the president of our league for the last two years in our vote that was held earlier this fall, or the fall of 2019. I'm here tonight to continue to build on the strong relations that we've established over the last couple of years and to be able to answer any questions that you guys have as far as the Little League and the relationship with the Borough, as well as to prepare and just follow through with some of the promises that we had in regards to providing information about registrations, which are not complete yet. We're still open for registrations, opening day schedules and the schedules for the season, which will start on April 4th, which is Saturday. And basically just try to continue to establish a good communication line so that we make sure that we're all on the same page. So welcome those of you newly elected members. Look forward to getting to work with you and look forward to building the end of the relationship.
I do, I do.
I'm sorry. Did your whole board change over?
Not the entirety board. We did have a vote. There were two new members added to our board to replace Mr. Schaefer, who had retired as president, Mr. Shuler, who was our softball president. So Don Shannon was elected to our board, as well as Jason Huffman, Dr. Jason Huffman. And I apologize, scheduling conflicts prevented them from all being here tonight, so I'm here representing them all.
We had a great relationship with Jim Schaefer, so I'm sure we'll be able to continue that.
Yep, very much looking forward to that.
Can I ask, what do you do in order to get like the Morrisville schools engaged in Little League?
Sure. We try to make communications to parents as best we can. So we're involved in things all the way from our beginning of registrations, which happened around the Winterfest time. So we try to have presence during the parades, letting folks know that we're here. In the past, we've tried to put signs up in nearby houses that are willing to let us permit to put those signs up. Unfortunately, we're in a difficult situation in that we're not able to engage directly with students in the school and post flyers there. My understanding is that's just a restriction for most organizations. You'd have every organization under the sun asking for that. But if, you know, if Borough, the education system, were interested in working with us, I would love to increase that presence there.
I think I was at Spirit Night, or whatever, I forget what it's actually called. I think it's Spirit Night on Friday, and I was talking to the principal there, and he said that maybe to contact a superintendent and figure out a way to maybe come into the school and give a presentation, maybe like a little workshop to get the kids interested, because, you know, the kids see a flyer, oh, big deal. But if, you know, they're out there, you're throwing the ball to them, and they get an interest, then it kind of, you know, spurs some kind of activity.
Absolutely. We would love to do that. And actually, there's a lot of kids that are either in the league now, or that have graduated from the league, that would love to come back and participate in some activities like that, in addition to coaches and parents.
Give them a call, because they said they were open to talking with you.
So the superintendent I should speak with?
The superintendent.
Okay, great. We'll do.
Jason Harris.
Jason Harris, thanks.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Adam. There's constantly a year. I'm like...
Anybody else?
So I do, on behalf of the league, I have a small request. I'm hoping it's not too small. Our registration numbers are down, as I mentioned, quite significantly, and I was speaking with our treasurer. We're trying to figure out if we could potentially stretch the payments out for this year to get us past the initial path. So I think as our last memorandum of understanding, we had agreed to a $7,000 payment annually on or before March 31st, so basically the end of this month. And if there was a way that we could possibly pay maybe half of that in the short term, and then another payment later on during the year, once we've completed all the registrations and have all the revenue in, that would go quite a long way in terms of helping us just navigate our finances for the year. I don't know if that's something that I present to council in this format, or if there's another way to pass that through, or...
Well, I can't imagine an objection, but I think if you're going to do like half at the start of the season, half at the end, or, you know...
That would work perfectly fine for us.
Something like that. It would, I'm sure, be fine. And does anybody object?
I would just say work with the Borough manager on it.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll definitely do that.
What is your annual fee?
So $7,000 is the amount that we pay the Borough for each year. That's split into a portion that goes towards the cost of maintaining the field, mowing it, that sort of thing, as well as just a general, I guess, usage fee if they look at it.
Okay. And you pay electricity separately?
Yeah, so the electricity that's used in the clubhouse, so field lights and those electricity, 100% paid for by us. There are some other electric bills for other lighting that's just on in the park, and I believe we split that 50/50 with the Borough.
Anybody interested in maybe waiving some of the fee for this year for the Little League? Maybe we can discuss that.
Well, actually, I think they get their bills, those bills directly, don't they?
Yeah, they usually come directly through us for the electric bills and that.
Electric bills, I think you guys have to take care of. What I was thinking about the $7,000.
Oh.
It's just an idea.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I think that, wasn't that reduced from $10,000 at one point?
30, I think, at one point.
Well, because it was, yeah, we were looking for 10 a year, and then, so...
Declining enrollments.
Maybe it can be, you know, discussed further, but I don't know that it would be this year or this evening.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we can keep it in mind and have to think about it.
I didn't expect to have, well, I appreciate that. It's a very generous offer, and we would really love to work with you guys on that, because, like I said, the numbers are down for us, and not just a couple percentages off, like, we're talking about a quarter of our numbers, which is a pretty significant hit.
Well, maybe something for us to think about is that they take that money and they try to recruit more Morrisville kids, maybe by going to the school and doing workshops, you know, and maybe making it a scholarship for some of the kids that may not be able to afford it.
Yeah.
So, like, we'll discuss it internally and...
And I would recommend that when you get your, get a better feel of your registration numbers, just let the, you know, let the Borough manager know and talk to the manager, and then he can bring it, you know, we can revisit it sooner than later.
Absolutely. No, that would be greatly appreciated. And I do know that, you know, given all the development plans, I haven't stayed up on exactly where that stands for Williamson Park, but, you know, to the extent that that would potentially impact our fields, again, would love to continue to stay in communication with you guys, would prefer to not have changes to the existing park as it exists today, given that it may just dramatically change if something goes through with that. But again, I'll work with Scott with the Borough manager on working out those details.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
One other thing. It's my belief, and maybe it's changed, but there have been opportunities for children and families that find it not affordable to play, and the league has worked with them to make sure that those children play, even if they couldn't afford it.
That's absolutely true. And matter of fact, actually, this year, at least as long as I've been involved, I've been in the border for four years now, this, we've had more charity cases effectively than we've ever had before this year. And so we're doing a lot to make sure that kids have the opportunity to play baseball and softball, and that financial barriers do not stand in their way.
Anybody who wants to play should be able to play.
That's 100% our attitude. We do quite a bit of fundraising to try to offset those costs where we can, so. I'll just close with saying, again, our opening day is Saturday, April 4th. If any of you are available and would like to participate, we'd love to have you, you know, really get a great attendance from the community, and as I'm sure you know, the parade goes through town all the way through, so if you choose, welcome to walk with us as well. Nice ride.
Yeah, actually, you guys were kind enough to send us a message, and I think that was distributed to everybody, the details for the parade, so.
Do you mind just giving the details for the public?
Yeah, absolutely. So I apologize, I don't remember the exact times, but that morning, Saturday, the 4th, actually, our kids will start off with doing their team photos, which is a cool opportunity, and then they'll gather together at the old site of the MR Rider School, where basically the teams all line up by age groups. They're usually led by a fire truck. Morrisville Fire Department provides that. We also have folks represented from Trenton Thunder, so Boomer from the Trenton Thunder usually comes, so it's a really cool experience. And our board members, our coaches, and our families all have the opportunity to walk and really just show some Morrisville pride, which is a really cool showing, and we're really glad we can do that and be part of the community.
And we have our annual meeting at the park in June.
That's correct.
Which you and I will schedule with Public Works Superintendent and others. But certainly, if stuff comes up before then, don't wait till June, you know, just call or email like you usually do, yeah.
Absolutely. And I do want to just go on record by saying I appreciate all the Public Works has done. A matter of fact, I think it may have been some folks at Public Works that helped just pick up some of the leaves on one of our fields this past week, so that assistance is invaluable. We have a lot of volunteers that help try to rake them into piles and that, but getting rid of them, if you guys can help us with that, it'd be wonderful, so.
Great.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great evening and look forward to working with all of you. Take care.
Thank you. Under announcements for next week on 4B is a DCED police management study. That'll be presented at the regular meeting.
Just so you're aware, council will hold an executive session following this meeting to discuss legal personnel and real estate matters. No, there will be no voting, and council will not need to return to session following the executive session.
Moving on to five, public comment. Jane Berger?
Good evening, Jane Berger, 90, West Maple Avenue. I attended the October school board meeting, where one of the agenda items was accepting the sale of a tax parcel that's in the repository, which is basically the graveyard for tax properties that have been leased and were never sold at a sheriff's sale. And I think all three taxing authorities have to approve that, and I'm not seen on the agenda, and if I missed it in February, I'm sorry, because I was here. But I do have what the tax parcel number is, if you want to follow up on that. It's for the public, 24-012-033. No one at the school board meeting identified the actual location of this tax parcel, but their share would be about $1,500, so ours would be obviously somewhat less than that, since their taxes are higher than us. So I'll give this to you, and if you could, you know, follow up on that and see if there's something that should come to us, or perhaps you know that's...
Actually, I am aware of it. It is going to come to us. I believe it's going to be on the April agenda, because we were waiting for the other taxing authorities to agree to the amount.
Okay, because the school does it. Sometimes the county likes to be the last player. Do you happen to know?
The county will be last, yes.
Do you know the location of where this property is?
I believe it's South Delmore Avenue, and it's a sliver of a property that was supposed to be attached to the property next to it, but somehow they had different parcel numbers, and I don't know the whole backstory. The county has been working to resolve the issue.
Okay. Because it seemed with the amount the school was getting, that I was thinking it might have been some kind of an, maybe a lot of some kind, and that, that sounds like it, what it would be, and whatever it is, anything that goes back on the tax rules, I certainly appreciate it, no matter the amount. Thank you.
And there's no one else signed up for public comment. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, moving on to six, approval of the minute. Six A is approval of the Borough Council regular meeting of November 18th, 2019. Six B is approval of the Borough Council regular meeting of 1/21/2020. And then six C is approval of the Borough Council Agenda Meeting of February 11th, 2020. Move on to Finance. Seven A, Treasurer's Report. Seven B would be a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. And we go move on to eight, which is Report. Next week, we'll have eight A, which is the Mayor's Report. Eight B will be the Police Chief's Report. And eight C would be the Junior Council Person's Report.
No, just here if we have any questions about any other stuff.
Okay. All right, nine, action items. Nine A is a call for a motion to approve the Morrisville Little League opening day parade to be held on Saturday, April 4th at noon. Nine B is a call for a motion to award the bid for the 2020... Oh, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Was there anything anybody wanted to discuss about the parade? Nine B is a call for a motion to award the 2020 road paving program to X in the amount of X per the recommendation of the Borough Engineer, and to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents. Any discussion? We have the engineers, a representative from the Engineers' Office here, if anybody would like to ask any questions.
Just a quick question from me. Do we know when the bids are going to be pulled for that?
Bid opening is tomorrow at, is it 11, Alora?
10 a.m.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
What is the, the last we spoke, I think the total amount available was $198,000. Is that correct? And we still needed $157,000? So I'm just wondering, we talked about having to possibly alter the original?
Oh, we will. We've, we've bid each separately within the same bid specs, so that we can drop whatever ones we're going to need to drop in order to keep it within budget.
Okay, and this...
Unless council wants to appropriate additional funding.
Well, I have other questions, so I don't know that we have that, but I don't think there is anymore.
No, there isn't.
So, but I do have a quick, was Althea always on the original list? And what part of Althea?
It's the first block of Althea, closest to Bridge.
Okay.
It's Francis, which is only one block. It's Legion.
Melvin and Granville.
It's a portion of Melvin, and it's Granville, yeah.
And are you doing all of Legion? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
It's...
I mean, it's really bad in the middle, but towards the end, it's...
Oh, it's going to get worse, because the MMA is going to do some slicing and dicing.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Alora, do you know how many interested bidders there are?
So far, I'm pen bid, there's probably over a dozen people that have downloaded the documents. We haven't seen any bids come in yet, so usually they don't upload them until like the day of. Yeah.
But are there any, I know sometimes you get subcontractors and stuff to download them, but are there a number of, you know, prime contractors?
Yeah, our typical contractors that we've seen in the past, Earl, General, JDM, those kind of contractors.
Anybody else?
We're getting half of that, yes. So when Monday's final, final, final agenda comes out, you'll know who Mr. X is and the dollar amount. In fact, we'll probably have the Borough's Borough Engineers' Recommendation to Award for their Friday packets, right?
Yes.
Okay. With the deduct bids, is there any way to take a partial of a deduct? Like suppose a bid comes in for $150,000, that's the nearest deduct, and the next one's $60,000 more. Can you do, you know, 50% of that street, or no?
We don't have it set up that way, no.
Anybody else? Thank you. All right, nine C would be a motion, a call for a motion authorizing the Morrisville Borough to participate in the Bucks County Department of Health 2020 Mosquito Control Program and to treat municipal properties for mosquito control. Any comments or discussion?
I'm just going to make a comment. I'm going to guess with the relatively warm winter, a lot of them probably didn't die off as usual, so maybe more of a problem this year if we don't spray.
Agreed.
Also, I believe this is no cost to the Borough, or is there a cost? No cost to the Borough, but the proviso is they don't do all municipal property. They're going to decide what municipal-owned property they're, they're going to do based on prioritizing.
Okay.
This is something we do annually.
Standing water, yeah.
Any other discussion? Nine D is a call for a motion to approve the New York City Runs Trenton Half Marathon to be held on Saturday, November 7th, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Pending Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Special Events, Special Event Permit Approval.
If you think you're having déjà vu, you're right, you already approved this, but they decided at the 11th hour they weren't going to be able to get their act together in time to do it in the spring, so they've pushed it to the fall. So it's simply a date change.
Anyone else? Nine E is a call for a motion to designate an official voting delegate, an alternate delegate for the 109th General Assembly of Boroughs, June 7th through the 10th, 2020. The designated voting delegate is appointed for the purpose of electing officers of the Association and voting on proposed resolutions and policies. Any discussion, comments?
Did we have anyone put in interest for this? I believe so far only Councilwoman Sherlock has expressed interest in attending. Is this something we could push off till April, in case more people decide they want to go to the conference? The deadline for voting delegates is May 22nd.
We could push it off to April. Okay. We want to remove this?
Well, you, well, we could remove it and carry it over to April, or you could approve it and just say, you know, if you're going, let the office know you're going.
Okay.
But if we only have one person... My sense is a lot of you aren't clamoring to attend this, so...
I won't be, I won't be in town.
I wouldn't be able to.
If there's two positions and there's only one person interested, it seems like we would have to vote a second time if there was another party. Maybe we'd be better off just waiting. Well, yeah, but there could be some heated competition for this, Mr. President. I don't know.
All right, well, we can leave it on for now, and if there's no other interest, you know, by Monday, we can, we can pull it then.
Yeah, we could just, on Monday, kick it to April's agenda.
Do you need the two, or one is good enough?
No, we're happy to have one, but two is... Uh, we're happy to have one, but two is preferred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to nine F, if everybody's finished. Call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Borough Engineer to submit a grant application in the amount of $82,750 to the CDBG for Morrisville Borough Public Library Roof Replacement, and to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Parker? This was, this is new, this is new business. In other words--
Actually, it isn't. These applications, these, what, three in a row, were authorized by council in, was it October? And this is just the resolutions to accompany them.
Well, this is supposed to be the match for the $52,000 we received from our--
That's correct. The CDBG would be stacked with the state money, yes.
Okay, so this, this was already approved, okay.
Yep, council already approved the applications. The applications are done. This is just approving the resolutions to accompany them.
Okay, and there, there's one resolution, I didn't bring it up right now, but one of those resolutions that you sent out the other day, it talks about authorizing the Borough Managers to execute the necessary documents, which I understand is absolutely necessary. But one of them actually says Borough Manager Scott Mitchell, and the other two do not. I'm just curious as to, you, you got--
Maybe, maybe I fell out of favor with somebody. I don't know. We'll have to look at them and make sure--
I mean, Borough Manager should probably be appropriate enough, but--
Yeah, that doesn't need to have my name on it necessarily.
I was just wondering why that one had your name in it.
I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
And actually, there, there is, Mr. President, while we're on the subject, nine H, which is the last in the series, the dollar amount on that is going to change to $697,339. So there will be a revised agenda, or excuse me, a revised resolution reflecting that change in your Friday packet. $697,339.
Alora, did you have anything you wanted to add? Seeing you go to get up, so I was just curious.
No, it was just a comment to the resolution. I think that resolution was utilized for the Keystone Grant. They wanted to have a specific name, so that was probably copied over from that grant, and that's why that one had his name.
Thank you.
Copy and paste.
Anybody else? Okay, nine G is a call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Borough Engineer to submit a grant application in the amount of $444,000-- $444,000-- $440,000-- to the CDBG for certain installation of-- wrote this, new sidewalk along West Trenton Avenue and the ADA ramps along Washington Street, Hillcrest Avenue, Grandview Avenue, and Melvin Avenue, and to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents. Any discussion?
Just one, Mr. Parker. I know I came late to this game, but where exactly are the sidewalks on West Trenton Avenue? And, and what part of Washington, Hillcrest?
The section of sidewalk that's missing on West Trenton is, it's right across the street from DeKalb, isn't it, on West Trenton? It's, it's not a very large section of sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk there?
Intersection. There's no, there's like an old asphalt path.
It's not even asphalt. The dirt is so packed down, it looks like asphalt.
Yeah, the sidewalk--
Yeah, it's about a half a block.
It's near the church on Maple. It's, I can't think of the street name off the top of my head.
No, it's on Trenton Avenue.
But the location of Trenton--
He's saying the cross street.
Yeah, the sidewalk just kind of dies in midair, and you drop off onto this dirt--
Right past the apartments.
asphalt path. Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it does go to the corner of the next intersection. I just can't remember what street that is off the top of my head.
And then--
That's basically it for West Trenton Avenue. It's not a large section of sidewalk.
And this is, you're saying this is already from last fall? Is that right? This particular--
These applications were started and approved last fall, I believe, October-ish.
Okay.
I think your other part of the question is where are the ADA ramps? And I think the answer to that is adjacent to anywhere we already paved, because they're supposed to be upgraded when you pave.
Or that's due for paving. Have you guys targeted specific ones yet?
Yeah, so you can see the list has Hillcrest, Grandview, and Melvin, and Washington Street. So all those are kind of like trying to get ahead of paving, so we're not cutting into new pavement.
So we're doing the curbs before we do the, the street?
We'd like to get ahead of it, yes.
Ideally, that's the way to do it.
Okay. Well, hopefully Grandview and Melvin will be on that street list. Okay, thank you. I have a question for the next one, if you want to stay up there. I don't know.
Anyone else on nine G? Okay, nine H, call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Borough Engineer to submit an application in the amount of $697,339 to the CDBG for Manor Park Playground and to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents. Any questions or discussion?
One question, if I may. This is an area, we, there's been some talk about the park, Williamson Park, and what's going to happen down, happen down there, whether we have, you know, development or no development. And then that some of the baseball fields will be moved up to what's now the old cloverleaf. And then, I don't want to use the word impinging, but it would be in addition to moving over into the area closer to Manor Park Playground. So I'm just wondering if this is too soon to talk about doing a development down at the Manor Park Playground? If we don't even know how far over the other possible development will, will be.
That's a conceivable possibility. The, Mr. McGrath, the developer you're referring to, if all of his vision plays out, he's intending to utilize the former cloverleaf property and possibly even what's presently the Manor Park School property. So he would almost surround the Borough's property between the playground and the parking lot at the senior center. This was, this came up and was discussed back in the fall when this was initiated, and the thinking at the time was, well, you know, we got a parking lot falling apart and a playground that, you know, one of these days, we're probably going to be directed to close, so we can't just sit on it any longer.
Well, I get it. No one wants to throw $697,000 away, but I, I would hate to see--
Even if we would get all of it, and we might not.
I would hate to see a project happen down there, and then all of a sudden, four or five years later, it gets just torn up because there's--
Well, it wouldn't be torn up. I would think, you know, none of us can foretell the future here in the borough, but I would think the developer would work around what already existed.
When, when is this grant coming due? Like, when, when would we get the, the dollars? And when would be the end date by when we would have to use it?
If we get it, it will be announced in, what, May, June?
Usually we get notice, yeah, around June, July, and then September, we get the agreement.
Right, and I think we have to spend it prior to--
It's usually about a year, so they like to meet their timeliness, deadline of April, but we have the grant agreement, usually it's a year long.
So in a year and a half, I would imagine we'd have a better idea what, what's happening with, with--
Yes, and this is provided that we were to get 100% of our ask, because if we don't, there's not going to be any shovels going in the ground, because we're going to be looking for other grant opportunities to, for the stopgap, you know, for the, the funding difference.
And does the Manor Park Playground have to be on that exact same spot? Or we, or we could move it in terms of like the development, as long as it's still in Manor Park? Like if it was shifted to the right a little bit, rather than where it is?
Well, I don't think that would matter, as long as we stay on Borough property.
Correct, okay.
Because we were actually contemplating at the time, using not only the existing playground footprint, but that bizarre caged-in, fenced-in area to the right of it.
Yeah.
And then, of course, also, you know, the Borough's parking lot there, so--
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Parker, can you clarify the amount? I think my agenda has a different dollar amount.
It was, it was updated, so it's $697,339.
Just like the comment that, you know, if the, if the development went through with the developer, the borough has the ultimate say in that, and part of that could be negotiations, whether they reuse this and move it somewhere, whether they, you know, rip it out and build a new one that's bigger and better. There's a lot of ifs in the future.
I suspect they would just go right around it and use the former school property as well as the cloverleaf property, because it's all contiguous.
I mean, my two cents is if we have the opportunity to get a grant to replace what's there and also make improvements to the area around it, you know, development is, it's possible, but it also may not happen, so--
It's speculative.
Yes, it's speculative at best, so--
Yep.
Mr. Parker, one last question.
Yes.
Well, my thought also is, why, if there's money out there, the $697, and we can get the developer to actually put the playground in and upgrade, upgrade that area as part of his, as part of his proposal, or our proposal to him, why would we spend that, that money if we could use it someplace else? And we could say that was, that would be part of our, our agreement, so. But that's--
And I think, I think--
It might be a stretch.
At this point, the playground and parking lot need attention now, rather than when his, you know, if, if that were to have, the development were to happen, when his plan would begin. We don't have, you know, we have nothing to even speculate when he would begin if everything fell in favor of it, and there's always the possibility that it might, it might not happen, so.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Parker. I think that this is one of those things where if it does happen that way, it's a great problem to have.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, nine L is a call--
Hi.
Hi, sorry. Nine I is a call for a motion to request PennDOT to conduct a traffic study of South Pennsylvania Avenue to, one, reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour from 30 miles per hour, and two, implement a traffic control device-- excuse me.
I'm sorry.
And to implement a traffic control device at South Pennsylvania Avenue and Post Road, and South Pennsylvania Avenue and Cleveland Avenue. Any discussion?
The motion is reading as both, not either/or, right?
It's for them to conduct the study for both, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about number two, the implementing a traffic control device. They want it at both locations, is that correct? At Post Road and at Cleveland? Is that what they're hoping?
I think the rec, the, the motion is, is requesting that PennDOT do a study for all three items, actually.
Okay.
To consider, you know, I'm assuming the study would, would consider the, the impact, the benefits from these, so it would just be requesting these three items to be part of the study.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So there's no financial impact, because it's something that PennDOT's doing, but what's the likelihood, and maybe this is a question for Scott, because I know you've, you've dealt with them, what's the likelihood of them just going, no, thank you?
Well, it won't be no, thank you. We'll get a, we'll get a polite letter from PennDOT's District Executive as to--
Why?
Their intent moving, moving forward. But I mean, it's a numbered state highway. The odds of them considering either scenario, I think, is slim. Plus, they may be reluctant to engage in another study where a study was just completed years ago, I think. In 2018, I think is when we got the final documents.
Okay.
But it never hurts to ask.
No, I'm good with--
Keep the pressure on.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Could we possibly add to this and ask them to also look at traffic calming for the whole stretch of South Pennsylvania Avenue? Because traffic control devices aren't really traffic calming devices, and they're different options. So if you tell them to look blindly at one, they may not look at the other.
Calming being like speed tables?
Speed tables, narrower lanes, different landscaping sometimes, curb cuts. There's all different types of traffic calming effects. I mean, they could, they could put, like, the Walkworks says we could put like bike lanes on sides of roads, which also tries to make traffic go slower, because they see the bike lanes or the pedestrian, the bikes, bikers in the lanes. Just something to look at to broaden the scope of this.
Yeah, we can phrase the motion any way council would like, but there is a street-side parking to consider there. If you're going to wipe that out for a bike lane, you might have some people chasing after you.
I have a question.
On a bike?
Actually, this is for, for Justin. Would a pedestrian crossing, like, say like Cleveland with, with warning lights and stuff like that, that a pedestrian crossing would, would push, would that be considered part of traffic calming, or?
If they're already--
I would think it would.
Already there?
It's like it.
Think it's already there.
Right?
From when it used to be a school zone, and now it's pedestrian crossing instead of a school zone.
I honestly never noticed it.
Both directions.
Okay.
Maybe we need brighter lights.
It does, it does need to--
Honestly, I've never, I've never noticed it.
Yeah, it does need to be changed out, I think, because it's very difficult to see when the cars block it.
Well, one is inoperable. John is actually working with, I believe, Armor to see about getting the other one working again, if they're able to obtain parts for it.
Is that the one that's like an X with the flashing?
I, I think it's on the southbound. Is it southbound, the southbound lane, John?
I would, I would also assume--
Oh, it's on both sides? Oh, I didn't know the northbound one was out, too.
No, one's, oh, one's out. I'm just saying, there's one on the inside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. But it's the southbound one that's not working right now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that one, we're trying to see if they can get parts to get it going again, but it, it might be a fool's errand, and the whole fixture might have to be replaced.
So maybe they'll do that and they'll replace it.
Well, actually, that would be on us.
Ah, how about if we remove it?
Say it got stolen.
Exactly.
So--
However you guys want this worded.
I'm okay. Adding the traffic calming.
Three would be traffic calming.
Yeah, maybe you're a comma, you know, blah, blah.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, after Cleveland calming.
Yeah, I'd say traffic calming from Philadelphia to Post. Do the whole corridor.
Sounds right. Philly to Post, okay. Yeah, that's got--
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Part of traffic calming, I guess, would be paint, because paint, paint's very cheap. And there's many communities that have it painted on the street. Slow down, 30 miles, 25. We did that every couple blocks. I mean, it's still, it's another reminder. It's very visible.
You're going to run into issues that PennDOT's not probably going to allow it on their state highway as opposed to a local road.
Which is why we don't have it in front of Holy Trinity coming down the hill. I know we tried it.
But you can always ask again.
That's right.
Anyone else?
All right, so just, can I just repeat this back to you, just so that, so this is going to be a call for a motion to request PennDOT conduct a traffic study of South Pennsylvania Avenue to, one, reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour from 30 miles per hour, and, two, implement a traffic control device and traffic calming at South Pennsylvania Avenue slash Post Road and South Pennsylvania Avenue slash Cleveland Avenue. We're good with that?
I had suggested the traffic calming from Philadelphia to Post.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Actually, you could just change it to say from Philadelphia to Post--
Yeah.
25 miles per hour, traffic control devices. Like, they could probably figure out what, where needs to go what, and, and the traffic calming.
Okay.
So they could study that whole stretch.
Philadelphia to Post.
Do you think it should be Cleveland to Post? So you have the light at, at Bridge Street.
I hate to be a nitpicker, but I think that you might have to add a few words, because this currently says that you're going to conduct a traffic study to reduce the speed limit and implement et cetera, et cetera. You really, isn't the traffic study to determine whether to reduce, et cetera, et cetera? Is that, that's understood?
Yeah, well, if we ask PennDOT to do a traffic study, and they actually agree to do-- Well, if we ask PennDOT to do a traffic study and they actually agree to do one, they're gonna do whatever the study finds. I mean.
Okay.
They're gonna view our two things here as helpful suggestions.
Okay.
And though.
Maybe.
Of course, considering.
Maybe, I mean, we're not directing them what to do. We're, we're making a gentle suggestion, yes.
The one thing I don't know if you have to mention when you're, when you're asking PennDOT is that the traffic has changed a lot with the new businesses opening down in Falls. So even if they do just a speed study or et cetera, that would be helpful.
Anybody else? Okay, and move on to 9J, which is a call for a motion to approve rehiring Officer Kyle Arias as a part-time police officer. Any discussion, comments?
Does this impact anything? Like, does it impact our budget at all?
Of course, but no, the police department's approved for 10 part-time positions, and I believe they're presently utilizing seven. In fact, I think one of those seven, one of the officers is out on injury, so.
Does, does the borough have any obligation to provide each of the part-time officers any kind of a minimum number of hours, anything like that?
No.
There's, I think, very minimal costs in uniforms and stuff like that, a few hundred bucks, it's not anything substantial.
Mr. Parker, a question about 10, the, the number 10 for part-timers, is that, is that our limit? Do we have a limit for part-timers?
Well, yeah.
It's a whole debate.
There are 10 part-time positions established. It used to be, I think it was eight, and the chief and mayor had requested if we could up it to 10, and council did.
Okay. I mean, sometimes you might need even more than that if you only have two or three, yeah, because it's, that's, I was just curious about the, the number, where it came from.
But, Mr. Parker, if I may, just from Mr. Paul, because he's newer up here, he asked about the cost. Something that the chief and I worked on and we, we disseminated quite a bit was, we broke this down on what it costs a part-time officer versus a full-time, and, because, you know, it is a budgetary item, and it's basically an officer, a part-time officer, let me be clear, he pays for himself on the first shift because there's such a difference in salary. And when they work a 12-hour shift, he basically covered, rather than having an officer work overtime, and then everything else is just pure savings on the borough's side, so it's a good thing. And it definitely helps fill slots when we need to have coverage on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on to 9K, which is a call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the signing of the PennDOT reimbursement agreement for the Bridge Street Crossing Project-Delaware Canal Topath.
This is that project that's been around for 1,000 years that might actually get done.
Really?
This year.
That would be awesome.
Do we have, PennDOT's hoping to get out for bid this year, right? Yeah, so.
What's the reimbursement part?
Yeah, Laura?
So this is that grant that we have, and it's just for us to, or the borough to utilize their system, basically, to manage the project.
So this is about accessing the money that's already there, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. And move on to appointments.
Mr. Parker, before we move on to appointments, I have a, I have something I'd like to present to council, I don't know if they're willing to, to move forward with it, it would be a resolution. And it's a resolution in support of the Jake Schwab Worker Safety Bill, House Bill 1082 and Senate Bill 464. And what it is, involves is our workers in the borough and the safety regulations under OSHA, because currently they're not covered under OSHA. Private companies are, but your local municipalities are not. So I have a, I have a copy of the, of the resolution that I can forward and put in everybody's pocket, and if, if they haven't determined yea or nay before the next meeting, we can, we can, you know, do it in April.
So this is a resolution in support of the legislation?
In support of this particular legislation, yes. I mean, I could, it's pretty quick, I could actually read it right now unless that's too cumbersome.
If you wanna email it to me or one of us, well, we can put it in the Friday delivery.
Okay.
Then everybody can read it.
Okay. Just so you know the history, this Jake Schwab, he had worked as a mechanic in Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority for 27 years, and he was killed on the job by an exploding airbag. And since then, they've been working diligently to try to, to make sure that municipality workers are protected under OSHA. So that's what this is about.
And how far along is it?
How far, how far? I don't know where it sits.
Okay.
Probably on a shelf. But I think that if we, at least, it's just a resolution in support of this, and then we can send it out to our very, various representatives. And maybe by then I can have an update about where it is.
That's a federal bill, right?
It would be, no. I mean, this is not, this one is just going to our Pennsylvania representatives.
Oh, okay.
Is the legislation federal or state?
Yeah, is it an act, is it a bill in Congress or in the State House?
No, I don't think it's gotten to Congress yet, no.
I think it's the state.
It's our own House bill.
I think it's the state to adopt the OSHA, OSHA regulations, yeah. And I, I have no problem with adding it to it, I mean, it's just in support of, but I think.
Of safety.
Yeah, I think we should just, you know, have it sent to everybody in their packet. But I, I have no problem with adding it.
Of course. Now, right before I came in, I asked Mr. Leder, I told him that I was gonna present this this evening, and I was wondering if, off the top of his head, without reading it, if he had any objections or what he, you know, what his thoughts were. And they were very quick, and he said, you know, anything that makes everybody safe, obviously who's gonna be against that. But he said it's also sometimes, now, these aren't his words, these are my words, that be careful sometimes what you ask for, because then you end up getting regulations that you really either can't follow or maybe costly. So that's, that's my thoughts on it, but I still think that we should try to support it and let them work out the details. So I'll, I'll send it to Scott.
Okay, could you just forward it to the borough manager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else before we, who wants to add anything before we move on to appointments?
Is this where we add items?
It actually should be under, is this new, new business?
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you wanna do it now, we can entertain it now. Okay. All right, appointments. The Economic Development Corporation has two, three-year appointments that expire on March 1st, 2023. Don Doreto and Karen Kane, their current terms expired March 1st of this year. We've, I believe, I believe they have.
Yeah, I believe a letter was, from each was included in a recent delivery to you all, that they both wish to be considered for reappointment. As does the Library Board, Nancy Sherlock. The Zoning Hearing Board was a resignation, not an expiration, so the alternate on the Zoning Hearing Board expressed interest in being appointed to be a full-fledged member, and if you entertain that or do that, then we'll be seeking a, a new alternate to ZHB.
And just a comment, Suzanne has been on there for probably no less than 10 years, I would think. I think she's very qualified as well as deserving, so I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that she gets appointed.
Yeah, I will say, I've, I've attended several meetings and she gives some good insights.
All right, so that was the Economic Development Corporation, the Library Board, and the Zoning Hearing Board. To read each one, but, so. All right, we'll move on to 10, which is unfinished business. Does anybody have any unfinished business?
Have a couple.
We're, oh.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Your councilperson, you go first.
Mine are just a questions about some unfinished business, and that's, and it's really just, excuse me, there's a, there's a 15,000 match listed for the Patriot Park Planning and Design. I was just wondering, is that in our budget, or where is that in our budget? It was listed, I think it's in the, I guess, it came from our engineer. They had listed some things. They also, there was a $40,000 match needed for the base and retrofit, and is that's, like, are these things that we're just gonna wait till the money comes in, or?
No, the one for Patriots Park, I can't remember, I, I think she's reading from your monthly report.
Correct.
And the $15,000 match for that, I believe, is budgeted in the line item grant match that's in the rec fund. The ones for Melvin Avenue were stacking multiple grants and covering the match with other people's money. Am I correct on that?
And we had the 40,000, we've already paid that, you're saying? Okay. Where did we pay that, out of general fund?
That would've come from the same line, the.
The grant funds?
Grant matching line item and the rec fund.
The one mill, right? Yeah. That's the one mill that's been in there, been there since, actually, the, the beginning of Patriots Park.
Okay.
That was something Debbie Smith and I came up with to kinda keep money squirreled away in the budget to apply for grants.
And then one last one is the A R L E program.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, the Arly.
Oh, Arly.
A R L E. And we had a match for that, you know, for the signs that we have to do.
Yes.
And that was our match is 23,000.
Now, that's actually gonna be an in-kind match, because aren't we, we're able to use public works labor for that, meet the match requirement, aren't we? Yeah.
That would be in-kind?
Yeah, because they're gonna do all the work for it. In fact, John's already been working on it.
Okay, I think that's, Williamson Park had a $50,000 funding for the planning, for the planning, and, and has that already been paid out?
No.
So we don't have that money yet?
Actually, that's the, is that the C2P2? Yeah, that is on hold until we find out what we're doing down there.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for all that info.
Anybody else with anything on the unfinished business?
Well, just gonna give an update, we're, it's like a 40-page big bid spec that I've sent over to the, the manager on the trash, potential trash contract, trash hauling contract. I'm getting, getting some comments, I thank Scott for his help, and that'll be, that should be, when do you think we'll have that ready for council?
We'll probably have that available for council. I'm not done scrutinizing that document, Mr. Solicitor.
It's over 40 pages, so.
And I just got it today, so.
You didn't get done?
No. So, yeah, probably by the end of the month, we will have it on the box for council to review. So it'll probably be on council's agenda, I would say, for the April meetings.
Good. Also, the memorandum of understanding between the borough and the school district, we sent over, we sent over to the school district to their attorney, and we haven't heard back yet, but Dave Trulow, who's their attorney, said that he would discuss it and get back. Once we do that, then, of course, we'll also have to do one with the Parochial School as well, but it'll be the same. We wanna see what, any comments that they have. We, we don't expect any major problems, it's a three-page agreement that we've, we redrafted it, and, you know, I'll let you know. But we're working on that. And the last thing is, I think, Scott, are you sending out the, I think, over a memorandum of law about the, the property, about whether they wanna do, I don't know if we're gonna send it out in the packet this week or whatever?
Yeah, it'll be in Friday, but we're gonna discuss it in executive session.
Okay, fine, thank you, I have nothing else.
Is there a cost involved in, in getting the MOU from the schools? I know that your, your time is being billed to us, correct? Mr. Flagler?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I'm just verifying.
Absolutely.
So I, I just wanna make sure, are we going to talk about having a process in place to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again? That all parties know ahead of time and all parties in our agreement, so that Darletta could've handled this on the beforehand, so that our attorneys don't need to be involved, and it could've been stopped a long time ago?
Mr. President, could I just point out that Darletta Berry Johnson's not as, an employee of the borough, and we really need to quit relying upon her and using her as kind of the scapegoat for all this.
I don't, I'm not using her as a scapegoat, I'm just saying that she was the one that initiated the grant. So, so if, if the mayor had worked with Darletta to get this done beforehand, before coming to the borough, we wouldn't be in the situation we're currently in.
I, I agree with you on that, Helen, but I think we need a procedure that, that involves the borough staff and not outside volunteers, I think, as part of the regular process. But we can discuss that later, I think we should discuss that at some point.
Yeah, just, if I may, keep in mind that we would likely need an MOU between the entities regardless.
Absolutely.
As part of this project, and that, so, I mean, that was an eventuality.
Oh, either way.
Either way.
Yeah.
Right, it's next time, I would suggest, I would start with the borough solicitor rather than have it drafted by a layperson and then send it to them. That's, that's the way I would recommend to proceed.
Since, excuse me, Mr. Parker, since the subject of this grant was mentioned, I'll just like to add, I was gonna mention that today the Holy Trinity School had their evaluation. As part of this grant, the schools were being evaluated as to what they needed and didn't need. I don't, we don't have those results, but they were evaluated today. So the professionals were there, I don't know if the, the chief might be aware of that, but they were, so, so that part of the project is done.
So we spent the, some of the grant money without having an MOU?
No. No.
Oh, it didn't cost anything for the review?
It, it'll eventually be invoiced, I'm sure.
Okay.
But they, they had set up a date to, to do some review.
We did spend without having an MOU?
We accrued.
Yeah, okay, we accrued, okay.
Anybody else? 11, new business.
So I, I had asked, I'm sorry, can I have some new business?
Yes.
So I had asked the mayor for an analysis of some of the truck traffic that was going on and, and the speeding that was going on in the first ward on South Pennsylvania Avenue. And I got back that on 2:25, there was a task, I'll say a task force put out where from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, there were many officers on South Pennsylvania Avenue, and they had 23 speeding citations for speeds between 41 miles per hour and 49 miles per hour. There were other, three other violations. In addition, there were some citations issued to trucks. Five were speeding, which were between 36 and 46 miles per hour, and there were four violations. There were four inspections of the truck, and one truck was put out of service. The average speed of the trucks, according to one of the officers, was 28 miles per hour, but I'm assuming that's more as objective kind of number than, than somebody tracking it, but I'm not sure, it doesn't say here. So based on all this information, I, I do see that there is speeding down, that there is speeding down on the first ward, and I do see that we do need some help, so I would like to make a motion, and I, I did some research and I will put it. like to make a motion, and I did some research, and I will put it together and send it out to the rest of council. I'm sorry, I didn't have it for today, but I was working on it this afternoon, that we, we make a part-time motor vehicle enforcement officer, whose sole responsibility will be to deal with motor traffic down on the First Ward and maybe around the bridges, even, perhaps even on North Pennsylvania Avenue. I've looked into it, and there are many cities that have this position. It would be a part-time position, and I know the chief has said in the past that the truck enforcement person does pay for itself by the fines that it brings in. So it's something we could reevaluate if it's costing us too much money, if the revenues don't actually pay for the part-time officer. But I also looked into it, and there are some grants that are available if you do have this motor vehicle enforcement officer. I do know that, that one of the companies, such as, I was looking, and there are actually some corporate and private foundation grants. State Farm and MetLife give out these kinds of grants in order to try to help alleviate the speeding that goes through town. So my motion would be to hire a part-time motor vehicle enforcement officer. The money, Eileen, would come from the citations that they write. The chief has said many times in the past that, that they pay for themselves. And it's something that we could reevaluate, since it's somebody who's part-time, we could increase their hours, decrease their hours. It would be something that we could monitor.
If I may, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but to be a motor enforcement, enforcement, you have to have certain qualifications. I know the officer we have is certified, but to find a part-time that's certified, that's a whole nother story, correct?
Talking about a
Chief, can you please step to the microphone?
Come to the mic.
Please.
I have a motor truck enforcement officer. Yes, he needs to have multiple certifications.
Yes, I've also been speaking with the state police, so they've also been chatting with me about maybe doing more around the bridges for us. So I did look at some of the, some of the job descriptions for, for a commercial vehicle enforcement officer, so I'll put together a better, more conclusive information about, like, some of the certificates that they need, what experience they need, but I didn't have an opportunity to do that prior to this meeting. Oh, that's great. I did ta, I did door knock a little bit down on South Pennsylvania Avenue, and some of the residents don't have a problem with the trucks, some of them do have a problem with the speed of the trucks, but a lot of, most of them agreed that it was really the cars that were the issue, and that the cars are speeding too much.
You're right, and you can see by the report that I gave you for that one day.
Right.
That it is more the cars that are speeding, it's not, it's not the trucks.
Right.
And 28 miles an hour is from the state trooper, he wrote down every truck that went by and you did the calculations. It was 28 miles an hour is the average speed of the trucks.
Okay, so if we did get a motor vehicle enforcement officer, and he was able to, and he was truck certified, then he would be able to do the trucks as well as the speeding cars? Okay. Right, but if you had the lines?
It's very hard, but again, I know you wanted to talk about that, miles an hour over the speed limit, but when we start doing lines, you
Right.
So they don't do it until they get 10 miles an hour.
Well, not if 10 doc gives us 25 miles per hour. Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that's going to cause even more noise by the revenue of the engines. And to be, just to give you an idea, what the, what you're proposing down there, to get a stop sign at Post Road and maybe at Cleveland, they don't want that. They want to continue the traffic, they don't want to stop the traffic.
Well, the motion, the motion was changed. The motion isn't for a stop sign and light, it's, it's for the calming of the traffic.
They're going to do their own study, they're going to do their own space study. When I gave you mine, these people aren't flying down there. I think you're But it's not, it's not bad. I spent all that time out there. We spent a lot of time out in South Pennsylvania Avenue since it became an issue again, and it's not, the speed isn't there. But I will, I will have that report for you next week.
Okay.
And you'll be able to see, and it's, it's dead on. It's going to be about 34 miles an hour.
Mr. Parker? I have a question, and maybe the chief can ask this.
Sure.
Or clarify. To have an extra officer down there to, to, you know, monitor speed, that's one thing, but to have a, a motor enforcement person that's qualified, that you want them down there, they can't do both. Because if they get stopped, if they have to stop a truck and spend a half an hour doing, taking care of the truck, now you've lost a half an hour of, of, like, I just, I think it's one or the other, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Very difficult time filling that, that wish. I'd love to have another part-time truck enforcement guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the point I was trying to make, is I don't know how we would find one. Obviously, you would advertise and all that. I don't think the availability of finding someone that's, has all the certs, that's looking for part-time work is as easy as it sounds, so.
It might not be easy, it might take a while, but at least, you know, we'll start looking for it.
Can't hear you.
You're done. It's going to be right now.
Okay.
Laying them off. Take a seat.
Okay, so I'll make some phone calls.
Maybe we should start to advertise.
Yeah. So that was actually, the motion is to kind of advertise for a part-time.
Well, can I ask you, can I ask you a question? Are you going to differentiate the difference between a police officer and a truck enforcement officer? So you're going to put him in a separate class to have him paid at a different rate?
We can talk to you about that.
Counsel hires and fires and pays.
Okay, then I, I'll do my research and I'll figure that out.
Okay.
Are you able to hire someone who's not a police officer to do truck inspections and issues?
The state does that.
The state does that, right.
Yeah. Would I be allowed to? I, I don't know. I mean, how do you, how do you, you know, pull him over in the law enforcement question? And then also, on the other hand, Mr. Flagler, you have a union you may have to deal with when it comes to something like that. I don't know.
I have a question, Chief. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but
Well, you will.
Well, it's a question, it's, I'm just, you brought it up, you brought up Bo's, you know, eventual retirement. Do you have a plan?
Do I have a plan to replace him?
To replace what he does besides just being a police officer?
No. No, because right now I do not have anybody that is truck certified. Billy Smith is a Waymaster, but that's it. And he works steady midnights and is very happy working steady midnights, and I'm very happy that he's on steady midnights. He's very good, you know, out there with the DOIs and things like that. So right now, no, I don't. It's going to be another certification, it's going to take a lot of time.
Right.
And I have a MOU right now downstairs at the state police that tells us how many truck inspections they have to do, and they have to maintain that. So with the manpower problem that we do still have, it's, it's, no, I do not have a plan for it.
So this would be a good idea, then, to pursue, even if it doesn't happen in the short term?
I just, ma'am, I really just think it's unrealistic. I really do.
May I ask a question? Ted?
Sure.
Okay, if Bo retires, and we have an issue with a truck, would we call Falls End then?
I would call another, another department that has a truck certified officer to come in just for that one truck.
Okay.
Not on a
No, no, I know, no, I'm saying if we have an issue with the truck.
Yeah, yeah, we have a mutual aid agreement, you know, would cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
I'm not opposed to advertising for a truck enforcement officer if we think we might need one down the, down the road. I don't, I don't know of Bo's plans or not, but it might be a little unfair to advertise it and then not have to use him for a year, so.
Well, I think we would still use him, he would just, my suggestion is to have someone as a part-timer, so, and then if Bo were to retire, then we would reevaluate the staffing and maybe then bring him on full-time or keep him as part-time. We'd still have to find money in the budget for that.
You can't do that.
You can't do that, no.
We're civil service. I love the idea and how you want to go from part-time to full-time. Boy, we'd get sued and get in a lot of trouble.
I understand, I'm just throwing scenarios out there.
Putting it out there, that's a scenario that legally cannot happen.
Is it?
And is it in our budget to bring another full, a part-time officer on that's going to work 24, 30 hours a week?
No, I don't think she's
Well, you have said in the past that the, the truck enforcement officer pays for himself with the revenue.
I never said that. I never said that, ma'am. You can look back in the budget and find out how much money we have brought in, but I've never said that Bo pays for himself. Maybe
No, no, Bo doesn't pay for himself, but, but, but the position pays for itself. Bo, Bo's a seasoned officer, but at, at a lower rate, it would pay for himself.
As, as, I would say, yes, as a part-time officer making
Right.
$22 an hour, yes.
Okay.
We're not going to find one.
Okay.
But please, by all means, Mr. Sherlock, ma'am, please advertise for one. And if I have a qualified Act 120 police officer that has all the certifications by the state of Pennsylvania, I will be more than happy to hire him. More than happy.
What does his rate run an hour, then? I mean, it's not our regular, what would he get paid an hour?
Who are you speaking of, ma'am?
I'm sorry, a part-time truck enforcement officer.
Well, would, he would commit
With, with the qualifications, don't they, don't they get more?
I don't know. I mean, a part-time police officer is $22 an hour with no benefits, no sick time, no holiday, no nothing.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about truck enforcement.
I think it would be the same.
Well, truck enforcement is a police officer, Bo's
Okay.
So
I, I thought they got paid more because they had these, those qualifications.
Well, are they, are you talking about Bo Luna, or are you talking about bringing someone in?
Well, no, in general, in general.
I do not know of a department that, that brings him in.
Okay.
Only thing I do know is Bo works part-time for Telly Town, and I don't know what Dan is paying him. I mean, I could find out, but I, I don't know, I don't know what you would pay him. That would be another council decision, do you pay him $10, $20 more an hour based on his qualifications? I mean, that would be something we have to really talk about
Right.
Before we put an advertisement out for somebody.
Right.
Now, we, that's, you know, I mean, I could, I'll talk to, you know, if you want a list of qualifications that they need to have, I'll be more than happy to get that together and, and send it to the mayor, and he'll send it to you if you want that.
Sure.
Okay.
More information is better than less.
Right, but this is going to be a very difficult lift, but we can try it, you know, but you have to figure out before we send an advertisement out, what's going to be there to pay, and are you going to give them any kind of benefits, or you, you know, how's that going to, how's that going to work?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to gather more information?
Yeah, why don't we hold off, but I'd like to put that on the April council meeting?
Okay.
So, so we'll, we'll hold off so that I can get more research and, because I have some information here with, with salaries and, you know, credentials, et cetera, but I'd like to do a little more, and I'll wait for the chief to provide me some data.
Or you could, or you could do something else, and that you, that Bo retires, you offer him a part-time position at a different rate than $22 an hour, and you hire another full-time officer.
It's a suggestion.
But I can't, you know, obviously, I can never say to Bo
Correct.
You need to retire, you know?
You shouldn't even say it out loud now.
I would never suggest such a thing.
Right.
But that's really probably the way you're going to, this is, if really it's going to happen, that's probably the way it could work out. But I, like I said, I don't know what Bo's future brings right now.
Yeah, we'll see. Maybe there's somebody out there looking for work.
Okay.
We'll see. Thank you, Chief.
Anything else for new business?
Um, yes, Mr. Parker.
New business, or?
It's, I think it's new.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep. It's actually, I'm just asking for feedback. Everyone received the design for the stage that the students are doing, the backdrop, and I'm just looking for feedback. There, no one's, no one has commented on it yet, or the colors, or the actual design. I thought the design was a little busy. I talked to the art teacher and thought maybe they could, I think there's a jukebox at the bottom of that design, and maybe that doesn't need to belong there, but other than that, I was just curious what everybody feels like. Right now, they've, the wood's been, the wood's been purchased, and they're prepping it with the, the primer, but no design has started yet until this council agrees to whatever they want.
I trust the kids.
Pardon me?
I, I trust the kids, whatever they want to do.
I mean, would they redesign what they've already?
Well, they would, they would redesign it a little bit if there was something that we thought was, you know, offensive or wrong or too much or too less or whatever. I mean, it's very different because of the colors. She was going for the California sunset versus what we have down there right now is pretty, it's black and white, which is, you know, it's, it's very decent what's down there, but definitely needs to be redone, which is why this is all started. So is there objection or suggestions?
I have no objection.
I have a question, I don't know if I saw it in there. Are they putting any sort of protective coating over top of it, like an anti-graffiti, so that if it gets graffiti, that can be cleaned off easy? I hate to see them put a lot of time and effort into it.
I don't think it was purchased, but maybe if we have somebody out there that wants to volunteer, I mean, volunteer their purchase of it. But, no, I don't think that was discussed, but it's a good idea, because right now, the, the design we had now, our, our work crew, and John can attest to that, they would go back and touch it up, because we only had two colors and a few stars. But, so I guess we do need to, to consider that.
And I like all the colors. But my concern with that would be, over time, being out in the sun and out in the weather, you know, how long is it until it starts to fade?
Right.
It's undercover, so it would take a while.
Yeah.
It is undercover.
Plus, they take it down, well, they didn't this year, but normally, they take it down every winter.
I mean, if they gave us, could they give us a list of colors that we're using so that?
Well, they, they did, I sent that to, yeah.
And the manufacturer and all that?
Yeah, now, I, I bought the plywood. They're providing, they're providing the paint.
Okay.
But I don't, I didn't have anybody pay for the primer yet, that building come in yet, so anybody wants to, you know, cough a couple dollars, that'd be good. I thought it was going to be less than what, than what it was. But anyway, so I think I'll tell her that everybody seems to be in agreement and to go forward.
If anybody has an objection, now's the time to say.
Now's the time, because they want to get started. This is, this is actual school project that they're actually being graded on. And then they'll be here at some point in time, probably maybe in May, the May meeting, and we can just recognize them.
Okay.
So I'm excited to
Any objections? I hear no objections.
Okay. I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Okay. 12, borough officials. Anything to add?
I just have one quick announcement. Sunday, March 15th, the Friends of Morsole Dog Park will be hosting their, I think, 12th Annual Dog Wash at Fort Paul's Doggie Daycare from 9 till 12 and 1 till 3. You can walk in, and there will also be House Paul's Veterinary Service there will be doing free nail clippings. So if your dog needs a bath after the warm winter and all the mud, bring them on down.
Anyone else?
I do have another question for all of council. There was some talk, and I don't know if it was rumor, if it was real talk, about having alcohol in a certain part, part of Williamson Park, that it's allowed. I'm not really sure what part that is allowed.
I'm not really sure what part that is allowed. But there's... The fire department is having a brew fest, I believe, in the park in September. At least, they're planning one. And then the Business Association is also planning on having some sort of Oktoberfest of some sort. Jane might be able to speak to that more. And one of the questions that continues to come up is about whether we can have alcohol in the park. It was always my understanding that we couldn't, but apparently, someone said that there's a small portion that is not part of what was originally Williamson Park, and I don't know what park that was.
I... That, I believe, the reason that area was discussed was that it's off the main area, and it can be contained easier. That was my... It's not like that that particular plot of land would be excluded from anything that was before.
Okay, so the safety issue was that it's... You're talking... The only place that has a fence is the tennis courts.
I think that's what they were thinking.
So, it's not really that it's allowed to have alcohol. It's just that if you were going to allow it, that would be the best place to do it. Is that the thought process?
I think that's whoever... Whoever put that out there, I think that was their thinking behind it.
Well, there are other towns like Yardley that have brew fests. Washington's Crossing have it, and they don't have it fenced in. So, I don't really have a problem if they want to have...
I think it was to control...
Does this go back to the original lease restrictions?
That was my understanding, which is why...
Has anything been done to clear those up, or are those still in effect?
Still in effect.
That's what I thought.
Right, so that's the difference between us and Yardley and Newtown.
Well, how about over there by Delmore and Philadelphia Avenue? I know that's open space. Is there possible to move the brew fest there?
I just want to remind everybody that another event had come before council, and we approved that, and that included alcohol. So, it...
Nickly could be done?
Yeah. So, I mean, I just want to say...
Who's going to enforce the restriction?
That's the thing.
At this point, as far as the fire company, I think they're looking at it. They're working on it. I don't think they have anything final. I think they're working on bringing something to council. That's what the chief said this evening at the Emergency Services Committee. So, I think we need to wait till they finalize their plans and bring it to council and provide us with all the information on what they'll do to restrict, you know, under-21s from being able to get into the area where the alcohol is served, their security plans, and so forth. So, I think we need to wait, you know, until we hear from the parties who are going to actually put on these events.
Ted, I...
Ms. Berger has something she wants to add. Sorry.
No, thank you, Mr. Parker. The Business Association is really looking at a fall festival to kind of coordinate with other venues in town, and the question came up if an area outside of the deed-restricted area would be available for a one-day special event that would be probably for beer, no hard alcoholic spirits. And we need to know if it's a legal possibility at all in an area of the park. We need to know that before we go through any further planning on that. And then what would need to be done, obviously, security safeguards, whether it's not a fenced-in area, kind of a controlled area, so the beer doesn't walk away. We'd certainly work out all those safeguards for safety and the enjoyment, but we just need to have some kind of, you know, ruling or looking at the area of the park, because you have a policy that says no alcohol separate from the deed-restricted area of the park that obviously has no alcohol, which was interesting. You couldn't drink what you could gamble years ago.
Well, you know, the policy committee can look into revising that policy.
It would be wonderful. Obviously, anything like this certainly has to be a controlled event and limited, because you certainly don't want anyone in the park after dusk doing any kind of alcoholic beverage. We know there's always concern with our vision of police officers to make sure those types of activities don't take place that are obviously unauthorized. So, anything that the council works with your solicitor or deem appropriate to let us know, we would seriously appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Sherlock, for bringing that up this evening.
Hey, Jane.
Sure.
Hey, Jane, when Chuck Mickelhany was here and gave a presentation with a gentleman from Fishtown, he had mentioned that if you used a liquor license from one of the establishments in town and kind of piggy-banked it, you could actually use the park for the alcohol. I don't remember all the details when he was talking about that, but that might be a suggestion for you guys to look into.
Absolutely, and thank you. The first question is that the borough would allow that on one of their park properties. And I think with that, if that establishment would be a part of the event using their liquor license, and I think there are other special licenses for one day...
One-day event.
One-day events that we'd applied through the LCB.
Okay.
But we just need to know if there was an area and under what conditions the borough would permit for that type of event to take place.
And the other thing for security, you could use constables as the bouncers around the perimeters.
Right, in terms of making sure that the individuals are the proper age to do that, we would not be using police officers because we really can't use them for that. That there's a lot of other legalities in terms of the authorizations and making sure only those of legal age can consume the beverages. So, we've worked on that, and our MBA presidents, I think, already had some conversations with our chief. So, we just don't want to go any further forward until we know just if, when, and what. Thank you.
All right, I have one question of council. Since there are two entities that are looking into doing events that include beer in the park, would we be okay with having the solicitor look into it just to give a definitive answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Sense.
No objections?
No.
You all right with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Actually, I think this was done last year.
If we haven't already done it yet.
Somebody last year proposed an event in the park that was going to have beer, and council made an exception and approved that event.
I think it fell through.
I think it was for this year, for the event to happen. And I don't think it's happening, but, yeah, so it's already been looked into once, so it's not a big deal.
Okay. If you want to contact the borough manager, I'm sure he could provide you with, you know...
You're just going to need extra insurance.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yes.
Beer insurance.
Do we have anything in writing from the solicitor on that? Just, I think that would be a good idea.
That's kind of what I was looking for.
Because the question's going to come up year after year, once we do it once.
Writing last time, I guess? No? You didn't have it in writing last time?
All right, does anybody have anything else then to borough officials?
Just have one quick question. We had put out RFPs for professional services, and we've never discussed any of those professional services. And I was just wondering if that's something we're going to eventually talk about.
I believe it was to advertise, and what's happened with that?
Well, it'll be up to council to decide if and how you wish to discuss them, but the proposals are due on Thursday.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And as we've been getting them, we've been putting them into the various folders on the box, yeah.
Thank you.
The ones that exist already? Okay.
In fact, I think we received one today.
Okay.
So, after Thursday, we could start reviewing all of them and deciding, okay?
Just like to say thank you to my fellow council people for their indulgence this evening while I found some things out.
So, can we move on to 13?
Before you move on, can... You mentioned you had an emergency services committee meeting?
Yes.
Would you like to give a report, considering all the hoopla and the media? Are they... I'm sure you discussed it much in depth during the meeting. It'd be good for the public to know that hopefully we're ready.
Capital Health, the representative from Capital Health discussed the coronavirus. And basically, there was a handout that I believe was provided to the borough before, and it's also up on the front table. And it just kind of, you know, duplicates what you've heard in the media as it is as far as hand-washing, keeping yourselves, you know, six feet from individuals who could potentially be infected. Yeah, well, it's more like six feet wig span. Trying to think of what else.
The information's on our website.
Right, and the information's on the website, website and the Facebook page. Other than that, it was just a first meeting and just feeling things out and making sure everything's all right. We kind of discussed Capital's response times. And... Right, and the ambulances are now clear and owned by Capital Health. And I'm not sure if they're rebadging them or not. Do you...
They will, Anthony, get the tags.
Have to get the titles, right? Titles and tags, yeah. There's also some discussion between Capital and the Department of Health as to whether or not they register their vehicles here in PA or in New Jersey or is they're actually stationed here, and so that's just about it. So, I think that's it.
While we're on the subject, do we have anything on our website about the virus or general information? I didn't check.
Yeah, website and our Facebook page.
Mr. Parker, this handout that you just referenced out of the table, is that what's on the website, or is this something new?
I believe that's on the website, as is additional information.
Okay.
That is the latest from the state of Pennsylvania. There was emergency manager meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Everybody from the county, and that was what was distributed by the emergency manager.
And that's what we actually have on our website from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management? Thank you.
It's actually from the Pennsylvania Department of Health.
Okay.
Not to beat the subject even more, but Mr. Mitchell, I know in my experience of my work, they're taking precautions, doing planning. Is the borough going ahead and, you know, done contingency planning for should this get out of hand and you start losing people to sickness and illness? Especially since you have tons of people from the public coming in and coming out every day.
Yes, you know, we operate numerous facilities that are open to the general public. That presents challenges. But yes, we have discussed at length various scenarios here at the municipal building for municipal operations as well as the library. We're all stocked up on our disinfecting cleaning supplies to the extent we can be.
Where do you buy them anymore?
Yes, it's hard to... They're hard to get.
Maybe we can have some here at the table, too, like for our next meeting.
Might be a good idea. But yes, we... And we're in touch with the Pennsylvania... Excuse me, the Bucks County Department of Health about various things pertaining to local government, and we will deal with whatever unfolds.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, 13, German.
Motion to close, number.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an executive session for legal personnel and real estate.
That's what I say. It's not even funny. We've had two transports to New York, people who potentially...
Really?
Proper guards up for some class.
I go to business?
No, you're just... Well, whoever... Make everybody stay in the office for two weeks. Well, yeah, you just... Everybody, if everybody thought they were first contact with that individual, then you would... If you just kept... You have kept everybody in the office for 14 days.
I'll bring in three meals a day now.
We have all your employees that were never sweating on it. To the extent that...
She was like...
I'm coming back up. I had to bring self-love stuff up.
You can work from home, huh, Justin?
What's that?
You can work from home?
Working on it. At some point, they may do that.
But I do watch...
But I figured, why bother just give it to you? I'll fill it out that way. It's... Yeah, it should be smoother. Yeah, that's the cheaper one, too. I think it's only like 60 bucks. Yeah, thanks.
You mean the big ones round?
Oftentimes, they ask...
We have one restricted... We have one we're not restricted. And they ask if anybody is like...
What's the difference?
Should sit our three room with us?
And she's from the city.
So, he's like...
Now, they never serve us in big cities, but you don't get... Well, they don't get served exactly what they want.
So, she's sitting elsewhere.
She's off her meds, easiest coughing, but it's okay. Steven Brooke the other day, and she's going to school market.
Yeah, I was saying, basically, kids like to split up. I will stay on stage.
Planting the tree to keep shape.
Right.
Yes.
It's just too late now.
I'm sure, I'm hoping.
And I will stay home.